I would like to call to order the Thursday, April 11th, 2024, Charge of Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting. If we could all rise and pay respects for our flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the roll?
Noted. There's a plural. Mr. Berger and Mr. Spiz are excused.
Thank you. Okay, item number four, approval of the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Tonight's agenda was Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Thursday, April 11th, 2024.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Our approval carries. Any conflict of interest or expertise context for this evening? Do not see any. Number six, approval of the minutes. Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 3/28/24.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes for the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 3/28/24.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Public comment on items not scheduled for the public hearing or on this agenda? You'd be the only one. Okay, seeing none. Number eight, commissioners' comments. Any comments or anything on your mind tonight? None? Okay. Yes, we do.
Our OCTV had an interview with our supervisor for the first quarter of this year. So I recommend everybody, if they have a chance, look at the 38-minute interview that our supervisor conducted regarding the township.
Very nice. Thank you very much to OCTV. Item nine, public hearing. We have none for this evening. We have no unfinished business, number 10. So we will move to 11, new business. PC training workshop. It's all you.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Megan Nassam-Minak with Carl Alwarten, and we're your planning consultants for the township. Tonight, we wanted, we didn't have any agenda items, but because we suspect that a lot of residential PUDs are going to come your way in the next two years or five years, to take this opportunity, especially because you're going to have one also in the next two weeks on your next agenda, to go over what a residential PUD is, what the process is, and to answer any questions you might have about that ordinance and the process. I'm going to ask us all, while the PUD that's on an upcoming agenda may be fresh in your mind, I don't want to discuss that one in particular. And so, we can ask general questions, and maybe you might use it for instance from that, but we could use it for instance from another one, from somebody else who's been on the Planning Commission, or people who've been on the Planning Commission for quite a while, where you may have had one before, or we can share experiences from other communities. So, we gave you all a copy of a PowerPoint, so I will flick through them and tell you where we are. And I'm going to hold up the page that I'm at, so that we all make sure we're on the same page, for those of you who are visual learners. So I'm going to flip to the second page, where it has this lovely boot. Because in asking what is a planned unit development, it's the tool for when the zoning shoe doesn't fit the potential development foot. So it's when a developer or an applicant wants to do something that's not allowed by the zoning, but it might be a good idea. So we're willing to talk about it. I want to stress that this is an option that a developer can take. So there are not township-initiated PUDs. The only time that you would ever do that is if you owned a piece of land and then you were going to develop it, or you wanted it to be developed in a certain way. But, so it's an option that the developer chooses, they fill out an application, and they bring it forward. Just to be clear. And there are many options for developers who are developing housing, and that's what, because we're talking about residential PUDs. They can do a site plan. And for a site plan, if it meets all the rules, Planning Commission needs to approve it. It's an administrative function by law. So if they've crossed every T and dotted every I for a site plan, you should approve it. And you'll hear us and your township attorneys saying that. A planned unit development is different. That's at the option, and then it is, I'm going to go into how it's possible. So the next one. It's authorized by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, saying that there are instances when flexibility in the rules can be beneficial. And so, every municipality that has zoning should have a process. May have a process do that. You may have a PUD or not. You don't have to have a PUD in your zoning ordinance. You've chosen to have two types of PUDs. I'll get into that in a little bit later. And so, that process, you've chosen to have that process, and that process is laid out in Article 14 for residential PUDs and Article 14A of the zoning district for mixed-use PUDs. When I say zoning ordinance, I want to remind you that that is your local law. So zoning ordinance, that is inflexible. If something in the zoning ordinance says "shall," you have to do it. If it says "may," then you have the opportunity to make that decision. The zoning ordinance often references the master plan, and the master plan is a guide. So the master plan, even though it might say "shall" in the master plan, there's some legal room there when you're making decisions. That's a guide, and you can make a decision contrary to the master plan if you can say how circumstances have changed between when the master plan was done, or in this particular instance, that it might not apply. Also, how is that planned unit development possible? What mechanism are we using? You're using a special land use. I don't want to confuse it too much, but there are two options for enacting a PUD. One is a rezoning. And for those of you, I think all of you were here, no, Mr. Attorney, you weren't here at the last meeting, but I'm sure you saw notes and maybe watched the video. Somebody said, came up and said, oh, whatever they pass, we can have a petition for it to be voted against. In this particular case, no. If your PUD was through a rezoning, where there was a change to the zoning map, yes, there's the ability to put a petition forth. Since you've chosen to use the special land use option, where only the Planning Commission makes the decision, that petition is not possible. It's not an option. So, best decision, and Mateo's going to go into the process more, rests with you, the Planning Commission. The only thing that the Township Board comes into is that there's a development agreement at the end, and they have to approve the development agreement. And that really executes all the conditions and whatnot. So does anybody have any questions about that?
So terminology, "shall," we have to do it, "may" is an option?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, so now, oh, yes, Mr. Noel.
So if the Planning Commission approves, and it doesn't, that's the final stop, correct? So when it goes to the Township Board, the development name and the development agreement will be going to the Township Board to be reviewed for the development agreement, correct?
Yes.
But if the Township Board were to say no, I don't know how to, yes or no, if it were to say no, then it doesn't go to the Township Board for the development agreement?
If the Planning Commission was to say no, so if the Planning Commission, either at preliminary or final, and again, Mateo's going to go over what those stages mean, if you said no, then it's, there's no reason for a development agreement, and it would never go to the Township Board.
In the past, when we've had developers come to us, it's up to them to make the plan for us to review.
Yes.
So if they have a preliminary meeting with the people around that area of where they're going to be developing, and they get a sense, they have a plan, then they get a sense from the people, the township may or may not be there, but when they get the sense, they change it and bring it to the township. That's how the procedure goes.
That's how the procedure can go, yes. They, the applicant, will do whatever plant, whatever due diligence they choose to do. It would be highly encouraged for them to talk to the adjacent property owners to see what they would think, because everybody within 300 feet gets a notice of the public hearing that's required. And then, they develop plans and submit a preliminary site plan, a preliminary GBD plan.
In one of the past history ones, we had, it came to the Planning Commission, it was either, it was withdrawn or tabled for them to go back and make some changes, and it came back again. And then, it was, I believe it was voted on at that point of time, and the Planning Commission was not in favor of it, so it stops right there. Unless they go back and replan and come back again?
Unless they reapply, yes.
And that's a reapply, okay. So when the NOA is set at the PC, the only way they can come back is reapply?
Yes.
Now, where does the ZBA play into that, if at all?
With the PUD, the ZBA doesn't come into play at all. Because you are making, it's called, the other word that's sometimes used for PUDs is contract zoning. So you're making a contract with somebody, because they're asking for, essentially, a lot of times they're asking for an exception for the rules, and you, in return, they have to bring forth a recognizable benefit. I'll get into what that recognizable benefit can be a little bit more, a little bit later. But, so, and you may have, and every PUD is different. Every PUD is their own special snowflake. So, that's why from, when they're approved later, I think, Tim, who's your building, Tim London, who's your building official here, he'll tell you that, and I'll tell you from my 20 years' experience, they're really difficult to administrate and enforce, because each different one has its own special rules, and there might be different phases that have their own special rules. They may have made, that may have made a great amount of sense and was the right choice at the time in approving the development, but it can be difficult on the back end if there are a lot of rules that are attached. But once those are laid down, and they're usually laid down in the development agreement, if somebody, if, let's say, somebody wants to put a deck on their house and it violates a setback that's in the PUD, usually unless there's specific rules in that PUD agreement, they can't go to the ZBI. They might have to get an amendment to the PUD.
So how does the PUD work with a preliminary site plan review with the township?
The preliminary PUD is your preliminary site plan review. That's the same function.
Well, we have those pre-app meetings.
Every, yeah, yeah, so every, and again, this is process, we're going to get to that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay. But, for every single development, whether it's a PUD or a site plan, they have to have a pre-application meeting with township staff, consultants, that happens before they submit. So, and that's a great opportunity for them to bring ideas forward, and often what happens at that time is the fire marshal will say, I need you to think about this point for access. Will say, that's a good, that seems like a good idea, it fits with the master plan, but the problem is, if you did it as a site plan, it doesn't fit the zoning. So maybe the PUD, a residential PUD is a good fit. And then, the township engineer would often says, these are your challenges with utilities, or things that you're going to need to be aware of. Okay.
Oh, there's a young man over on the left. What, right, oh, yeah.
But, but basically, that planned unit development is its unique area with its own rules. So, I'm going now to the Sparkly House. And this was just a placeholder to say that what we're really talking about tonight and delving deep into is residential planned unit development. Because you have two, again, you have residential and mixed use. And we don't, we haven't heard any rumblings of mixed-use PUDs. We've had a couple of pre-acts for residential PUDs, so that's the reason we're concentrating on those tonight. I'm happy to talk about them at the end, if you have questions about mixed use. So I'm going to go to, what's the intent of the residential PUD? And this intent is important, because whether it meets this intent or is one of your standards in making a decision. And so, whenever in the zoning ordinance it says you're the standard, that's when you're making a decision, what you go back to. So your thesis sentences, if you will. So if you are feeling lost when you're going through the materials, go to that standards section, put them out in front of you, and just ask, okay, does this, does it meet this, does it meet that, does it meet that? So, in terms of the intent of a residential PUD, one of the things is to encourage flexible, innovative, context-sensitive, and, it's highlighted in green there, higher-quality design of development. So if they are not bringing a higher-quality design as part of a residential development, residential PUD, you are, that's one of the big times that you could question them, ask them for what you feel would be a superior design. There are some things laid out in the zoning ordinance, or also give them examples of what you think. Maybe it's that it's, instead of them all being front-loaded garages, they're side-loaded garages. It might be something to deal with the exterior materials, if you're being really fine-grained, and also maybe looking at the site. I don't see that this is a higher-quality design in terms of working with the natural features that are there. Wants to encourage the land in accordance with character and adaptability. Sometimes, there are development problems with pieces of land. Soils can't support basements. There might be things where, especially here in Oxford, where you've had a lot of extraction uses, the soils are unstable or shifting. And so, to put a basement in isn't possible, or it would be very expensive. There might be also some other things that are there, tunnels, et cetera, that prevent things from happening. Sometimes, I've also encountered where a farm field had arsenic contamination, because an old apple orchard was there, and they had high levels, and they were asking for a PUD, so, because it was so expensive to take those soils out, they were looking for a higher density. So a lot of times, you'll see in a lot of communities, environmental mitigation is a reason to allow that PUD and allow a higher density. I don't think that you're in court, that would be something that you would have a lot of, but you never know. Also, that ensures greater compatibility of design and use between neighboring properties. So you're really looking at how it integrates. And does it keep the character, and does it integrate in between? Encourage innovation and greater flexibility in land use planning and design. That might be some sort of green building, let's say, geothermal heat, and you need more area for it, or you're concentrating those fields of pipes in one area, and there's a communal element that you haven't had before, or things like that. And that design, or things like that, change all the time. Also, looking for greater enhanced housing circulation, farmland preservation, and recreational opportunities. So there may be certain housing opportunities that we're looking to have. A lot of communities, it's senior housing. They really need more of those. A PUD would be a way to allow those units to be clustered in a single-family zone, but still have, not have the same impact. Circulation, there might be a road that's needed. We've talked a lot in the master hand about road connections. So somebody might come in a residential PUD and say, look, we'll give you this access road. You know, we're going to connect these two roads across. And I think, you know, if you think of some of the mining properties that may come up in the next 10 years, you can envision where that road might be. That, if they build that road and deed it to the, deed it to Washtenaw County, it's a public road, it's not a private road, that's a substantial benefit. That could be something that's considered. So that would help with overall circulation, or farmland preservation. Another thing about a PUD is it doesn't all, what their recognizable benefit is, doesn't have to be on-site. For a site plan, so for your normal, average-day residential development, the township can't require them to do anything that's off their property you're not directly adjacent to. So in terms of road improvements, whether it's widening the road, whether it's improving an infrastructure, improving an intersection in terms of lighting, lights, things like that, or paving the road beyond what is right next door to them. So in terms of farmland preservation, someone could say, hey, I'm going to, I have someone who is willing to put a restriction on their property that'll be farmland. And they're essentially giving me, but I know that they could fit 20 units on that, they could put 20 houses on that piece of property, but they're currently zoned. They, that's enacted, and then I can move those 20 units to this piece of property someplace else. That's something you could use a PUD to do, to preserve farmland. Or recreational opportunities. They might provide a park on-site that's public. They might provide some private recreation, and you could look at that, as to whether that's a substantial benefit or not. But also, some folks have donated parks either as part of the property or made donations to fund for recreation or to the construction of the senior center, or something like that, that the Township or the REX Commission is looking to do. Another part of the intent is to facilitate the construction and maintenance of infrastructure in a more economical or efficient manner. So, in some instances, it might be, if someone puts a pipe in a certain way, maybe they're in an instance where they don't have to have septic and well. They could have septic and well under their underlying zoning, but if they made the lot smaller and preserved some natural features, they would then need to hook up the sewer and water. But the township at that point is also looking to do some infrastructure improvements, whether it's looping a pipe, whether it is putting in a pump station, something like that. So if they're contributing in any way to those, whereas going the extra mile to tap into the township's infrastructure or allowing the township to put a pipe or some sort of infrastructure there, that could be a substantial benefit. Encouraging a less sprawling form of development. So, single-family housing is kind of the alligator of land use. It is the most consumptive. It takes a lot of land. If you think about a one-acre lot, that's, it's a lot of land. You have to have a septic field there, a well, whatnot. And if everybody controls their own lots, everybody can take down or put up whatever landscaping they want. They can do whatever they want to their wetlands within, you know, state parameters. When things are clustered and put tighter together, or even clustered within more compact, then you have more ability to preserve natural features, which is something that we're hearing from the community, that it's very important for them. So, that's one of the things that's in the intent. Also, to reduce soil erosion by limiting the amount of clearing and grading necessary for development. So if you look at a plan and you see that they're going to be grading in the wetland, that may be something where you can say, hey, that doesn't meet the intent of this. We want to have the minimum amount possible under the PUD. So I wanted to know from you, developer, how we're going to achieve that, and what I'm looking at, maybe I don't see. Or maybe that's something that we do see, and you see in reviews from us or from the engineers, that really they're doing the minimum amount in terms of grading, in terms of choices, it'll mean how they design their site, where they put their retention, where they put their utilities, where they're building. Also, for the provision, the preservation of significant natural features. And then, there's a whole list here, but steep slopes, wetlands, significant use, wetlands, mature woodlands, working farms. In the best interest of the community, that would otherwise be substantially destroyed by conventional development. So how do we know this? Well, if you're, someone's doing a residential PUD, they have to give you a conventional plan. And so they have to give you a plan to show that, okay, this is how I would lay out, let's say, I can get, this is how I would lay out 100 lots. I have one-acre lots, a 100-acre site, this is how I would do it. So you can look at that, and then look at what they're proposing, and say, all right, do they, are they really doing that? And the answer could be, yes, absolutely, they're doing that. I can see how they're doing it, I can see how they're preserving woodlands. They have it marked out in terms of where those, which woods would, which, what's existing, how it would be preserved. I can see that during construction, it would be okay. Or, I'm looking at the wetlands, and I'm seeing that you don't have any lots, and none of your upper areas are in them, and you don't have any grading, or really minimal grading there. The other thing is whether it provides incentives to develop lands with significant natural features to the same density as that conventional, and while preserving those natural features. Again, that's somewhere where you can look at the conventional plan, you can look at their proposed plan, and see where things are. What is helpful, though, I would, my advice to you, also if you can keep three things in your head at once, is to lay out the conventional plan, lay out their proposed plan, and then have an aerial photo of the site at the same time. So then you can really see, based on that aerial, what's going on. You can see where the trees are, you can see where lakes and rivers are. And then, with your, because again, you have so much extraction, you have some areas which, they almost look like they've been rubbed with an eraser on the aerial photographs, and that's probably somewhere where it's wet, and there's some sort of aqua, aquifer or wetland going on. You wouldn't necessarily know it unless you went out there, and then also, they should give us delineations of where wetlands are, or things like that.
Is the conventional plan meet the zoning requirements?
The conventional plan has to meet the zoning requirements.
And then the proposed plan might not necessarily meet the zoning requirement?
Might not necessarily, yes.
And then the overview is to stack them together, so we, thank you.
Yep, yep. Also, to allow for, one of the things that is in the intent is mixed housing options and limited commercial activities. And so, if someone has, let's say they're in a single-family zone, and they're proposing duplexes and single-family housing, that would be something that meets that intent. Or maybe they have some multiple family. There's some restrictions based on when it's zoned, and what they can go, what they can do, and how high they can go. And also, keep in mind that a residential PUD is allowed in an RM district, and that might actually be where there has less density. So in RM, your multiple-family district, it only allows attached duplexes, attached single families, like townhouses, and multiple family. It doesn't allow a single-family lot. So if somebody might say, you know, gee, we don't want to have it all be, we want to have some single-family lots, they might come in for a residential PUD, and that might be the deviation that they're asking for. And then, whether it meets the established, whether it meets the standards in review process for residential development. So that's, that's a lot to keep in your head, even just in the beginning, and we're in the intent, right? So these are, these are heavy development proposals for any sort of review and decision, because there's a lot of factors in there. And also, when you're going through, I was joking to Mateo today, I feel like it's kind of your choosier on adventure. Like you can do this deviation, but here are these standards. But if you don't want to meet these standards, okay, you can ask, and the Planning Commission can allow it under these circumstances. So almost sometimes you have like a decision tree that you're going down. And at any point when you are reviewing these, if you have questions, you can always reach out to Tim, Cheryl, myself, or Mateo. And particularly for us, we have budgeted time in our retainer for phone calls and emails from township officials. So think of us as a resource, as part of that. All right, so any questions on the intent? Alright, so any questions on the intent? Okay. So when is a residential plan development possible? So turn to that page. And these are qualifying conditions. So, that property may be developed if all of the conditions are met. So all of these. And so if it doesn't meet one, that means they don't meet it. You can say, you can say no thank you. That there's a recognizable and substantial benefit. And that recognizable and substantial benefit can be any one of those things I mentioned. They keep out, they're preserving all the natural features onsite, they're paving a road, they're contributing to, they're giving a donation to the school district so that they can expand, expand the middle school down the street. They are providing a park. Maybe they're asking for just a little tweak of a rule so they're going to allow that the polyanthrale can link to their internal pathway system and that can, you know, be a jog, another link in the pedestrian network of the township. And those should be things that could, could not be otherwise realized under conventional zoning. So this is a substantial benefit above and beyond from that underlying zoning district and the ordinance. So it can't just be the plain vanilla, we've just met the ordinance. It really for that substantial benefit needs to be a step above. So you're looking for that step above, the higher quality. By state law, it has to be unified control. So there has to be an ownership or control of all the areas. Sometimes you'll have a site plan come through where you might have, especially if they're assembling a lot of parcels, three or four owners who are, who have a, who have an interest in it. And they could sign off and say, and then things are sold at different times and that's, sometimes makes more sense for financing in the development world. But for a PUD, it all has to be on one person's control. All the land has to be contiguous. So all the land that's being developed, it all has to touch each other. And then it has to be of that superior design. And the way your ordinance defines it is that there's at least two superior design elements. If you want a density bonus, which we'll get into, you have to give, you have to meet more of those. So any questions about when it's possible?
Megan?
Yes?
What might be some superior design elements?
So, those are in the ordinance?
It's on the laptop.
It's on the laptop?
It's a few.
What page? I got, I have to work this front. Give me one second.
Good shopping, knowing what they were.
So, superior design is the section 14-8. And you will find that on page...
14-8?
I'm sorry, not 14-8, my apologies.
Well, if you want to come back to it, I don't want to take too much time on that one topic. I'm just curious.
On page 14-5. Superior design, you have to have the additional units.
Okay, 14-8, conventional plan.
But then regularly, like, look at the general design standards.
Okay, so the ones... There's the general design standards, 14.6. So those are conventional, that it's a cohesive neighborhood design. And so those could things be as simple as, you have the same streetlights, you have, you have a cohesive landscaping. And every, and things are connected. I think you can, you know, think of a neighborhood where...
More brick, a facade potentially, is that considered a?
That could be considered superior design.
Okay.
Yeah. Location of the lots, that there's a minimum alteration, what the soils are, the views, whether, whether upland is screened from agricultural operations. There's requirement that the boundaries are at least 100 feet from all exterior proper lines, natural features. There's a lot of different things in here. Like for architectural design, residential basads, residential basads should not be dominated by garages.
Megan, it's, it's another two pages.
Oh, it's another two pages in. Okay, thank you, Mateo, so we'll get to that.
We'll get to it, okay.
Yeah. So let's go to the next one. Is additional density possible in a residential plan unit development? And the answer is yes. But, you should not assume that every PUD has additional density. So, although I said we wouldn't, we shouldn't discuss it in general, in particular, the one that's coming before you in two weeks, they are not asking for a density bonus. In fact, their conventional plan has more units on it than what they're proposing. So, not everyone that comes to you is going to ask for a density bonus. Usually, in my experience, the density bonuses come when there is a significant price ticket on the substantial benefit that they're providing. Especially for road paving and for infrastructure and for any environmental remediation. So, when, if additional lots may be proposed, if they've given that feasible conventional plan, there is ability to do a conventional plan alternate, which has a lot of math to it. And then usually in that case, what we would do is we might take the opportunity to show you what could happen in our review in terms of laying things out. And then also, additional open space beyond the minimum is provided. So there's a minimum amount of open space that's required for a PUD. If they want to have additional density, they've got to go above that minimum. And then that superior design elements are incorporated into the entire proposal. So when you go through those superior design elements, you'll see that they're kind of listed under different categories. Basically, they've got to hit one in each category if they're asking for those more units. So, again, if somebody's coming to a PUD, it's got to be of a high quality. If they're asking for a density bonus, it's got to be of a superior quality. It's got to be even higher. So what are the design standards for a plan unit development? So I'm on the next section, the next page, and that's section 14.6. So, that cohesive and traditional neighborhood design. So traditional neighborhood design might be like the old blocks that you, you have a couple places in the township where they're an older neighborhood or they were a village at one point and it's laid out on that square grid. That could be that. Or water stone, I think is a good example of a cohesive design. That's right, because there are elements all around, whether it's the signs, the little gazebos around the landscaping, how the roads are laid out, that you know when you're in a water stone neighborhood as opposed to some other places. And so, there's design elements that people can put in, in order to create that deal. Also, the location of lots, utility, mechanical equipment, access, circulation, and that's vehicle and un-motorized. So, again, like, I... We shouldn't be seeing pump stations or, or the average public shouldn't be seeing the back door of whatever this residential development is. So, they, they should be screening it with landscaping, it should be high quality. You probably wouldn't get into that until the final site plan. But again, looking at where those type of things are. Preservation of natural features. And this is not only that they're preserving them so you can see, oh, okay, you're not, you're not building in the wetlands and you're not going to cut down the, this mature woodland that's here. And they might have lines in the map showing them where. This can also get into how they're doing it and rules around those. So, whether there's grading, again, in, in areas near wetlands, looking at that. How trees are being preserved. Is there, they're, you know, there should on a final site plan be details of fencing and what would be around the trees and when it would be put, put in. So that when, again, as I said, on the administrative side, this is a hard, these are harder to do, but you could put rules in that would help the township to do our job. That may be rules that we don't have because there's not those rules in the zoning ordinance or in a separate ordinance that some other communities might have in terms of protecting woodlands or wetlands. Also, if historic preservation. So if there's a historic feature onsite, let's say there's an old barn, rather than knocking that barn down, that should be incorporated some way into the design and preserved. It wouldn't necessarily, it have to, it could just be a landmark, it could be a visual or it could be used in some way. And then stormwater management systems. And so again, on that, it's not just that they're dealing with their stormwater and meeting what they have to. It's that are they really using their low-impact development techniques? There's green infrastructure techniques. There's a lot of things out there where you can use innovative designs to keep the water cleaner and to preserve natural features and the ecological systems that are existing. And so one of the questions could be to the engineer is, what are they doing above and beyond what they're required to do? And a lot of the places where you'll probably be looking at it, they'll be connecting to lakes and you know that that's going to be something that's going to be a concern of the neighboring communities if they are, if they have lakes that connect to any water features that are going through those sites. Now, so I've gone through those and you know what to accept. But, as in the choose your own adventure, you can waive those. So, you can waive them when all of these are true. The modification is consistent with the intent and purpose. So, one of the things, if the intent is to preserve natural features, if someone's asking for a waiver of a 100-foot buffer and there are trees, mature woodland in that buffer, does that meet the intent? Or not? It might be that they're asking for a waiver of that buffer because of a utility item that they want to put in. Or that they feel like they want to use space from another and they had to push the lots that way in order to put in some green infrastructure. So there could be trades back and forth on that. Whether the, the other thing that you need to look for is whether it results in a higher-quality development. So you shouldn't waive any of these standards just because the developer asked nicely. You should waive them when you feel like it's going to result in a higher-quality development than they could do otherwise. And also, and then the modification is necessary for a higher-quality development. So, those two, I think, stack on top of each other and kind of nest together rather than, rather than really two separate standards. But that's how the ordinance is written. So any question on what those design standards are? Or instances that spring to mind? Alright. At this point, unless you have any questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Mateo and he's going to walk you through the process of how, when the application comes in, what, what would happen to it.
Thanks Megan, Mateo Fassalaco, Carlisle Warman Associate, excuse me, Township Planning Consultants. Yeah, so, we had kind of touched on it a little bit earlier, but the process for, you know, kind of beginning to end for these types of projects is the, we would have a pre-application with the developer that is required. And so at that meeting, as Megan had said, you know, your, your township consultants would be there, attorney, engineering, planning, building department is there, fire is there. From time to time, the township supervisor attends those. And really that is to just kind of just get the bird's eye view of what they're thinking, where they're thinking about it, the different options or types of development they might be pursuing, things of that nature. That's just really there to kind of guide them about what the process is going to be after that point, what the expectations are going to be for materials to come in. Sometimes the turnaround time in which, okay, reviews take this long, depending on conditions, you might get it back, we might not actually send it to PC, we might ask for more information. You know, they can kind of talk to us about what their preferred development timelines are and we can kind of walk them through the meeting schedules and if this, then that. And it's really just to kind of set the groundwork for what is hopefully kind of a realistic process moving forward and a realistic expectation of what they might, the challenges that they might hit on the site as it relates to, you know, the zoning. Because nine times out of 10, well, I'll say 10 times out of 10, we know the ordinance better than they do. And they might, you know, they have a lot of different developments that probably with a tweak here, tweak there, fit one community to the next, but PUDs aren't like that. So we really try to set that expectation early on of kind of what they're going to go through and what they're going to see. Excuse me. So, the pre-app happens and then it's up to them where they want to pursue. Assuming that they do, then they submit an application, a PUD application with a site plan and all the required materials. Again, we'll go through that, the township consultants will all go through it. Review, if there's enough submission information there, then we'll pass it on to PC for preliminary site plan review. So those, those site plan reviews are public hearings. They are preliminary. The planning commission at that point does have the option to approve, approve with conditions, postpone or deny. Assuming that there's an approval or an approval with conditions, more than likely, there would be an approval with conditions. Again, then the review, you know, the developer has the opportunity to go, make those adjustments, submit for final site plan. You know, once again, consultants review. Assuming the conditions have been, you know, the information's clearly there, they're meeting the conditions and filling in the information that was requested of them, then we would put it in front of planning commission again. At that point in time in which it would be the final site plan review. Planning commission can approve, approve with conditions, postpone or deny. And that is, that's kind of the, not the full last stop, but as far as the development actually proceeding, the shovels on the ground, that is. The stop with approval or approval of conditions. The next two approvals that follow that are the township board approving the development agreement and/or the master deeds associated with the project. If you want to go to the next page?
I have a question.
Yes.
On this page here, where is the requirement for a conventional site plan?
So the, and I've actually got...
Have you got more detail?
No, no, that's, that's a good question. So the conventional, they do need to provide conventional at preliminary. And so that's...
So there's two plans at preliminary that we expect in the conventional?
Correct.
Conventional and the PUD.
Correct. And the conventional is, is more or less for the purpose of, again, kind of showing the unit count and the use of the land. The PUD application would have more of the specifics about landscaping, what they're offering for that, what the, you know, the parking access is. And that conventional is really, it's one or two sheets laid out of, this is how many units under the current zoning we could fit on this site and where. And so long as it's feasible, they can't just, they can't just propose to fill in a massive lake to meet their unit number requirement. But so long as it's feasible, then we accept that and compare it against what they're proposing in the PUD.
Working off that conventional, the conventional plan is, is... The density is set. It's what, what the density of that property is.
The underlying zone, yes.
Underlying zoning. That doesn't have to be necessarily agree with the proposed plan.
Correct. They, they should be, I mean, they should be close. I mean, there should be, there shouldn't be a huge swing either way. No, you're fine.
What the conventional plan does is it sets the base to calculate density. So, if someone's asking for that density bonus, again, let's go with the, the 100-acre parcel where 100, one-acre lots are possible, then they would only have, could only put in 20 additional units. So, you use that conventional as a base to scale any density bonus. Or to say, actually, they're not, or to say, they're proposing less units. And you could look at that. And you could look at that as maybe that has less impact on the natural features of the roads or whatnot in terms of traffic count. And so you could use that stick, that's the measuring stick on density.
No, but when you're working with a conventional, each PUD is unique. First of all, let's put that right out there. So we have a conventional, we have the proposed, and then all these opportunities for preservations of X, Y, Z, who comes up with those ideas? Who comes up with that 100-foot buffer? Who comes up with, maybe you want to leave that preserved to some natural wooded area? Who comes up with those ideas?
I mean, it, it's, it's the developers' kind of first foot forward to propose what they are interpreting as we're going to save this, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And that kind of sets the playing field for the back and forth between, you know, the planning commission and the developer.
But I know the township can't ask the developer to do things, but somewhere there has to be some change.
No, no, no. No, in this case, you can ask them to do this.
But they put the first foot forward.
They put the first foot forward and you could ask them to do things. So I'm going to, I'm going to use an example. So a PUD, another client, it's, they, it's a really hard site, triangular site, it's right by a creek. They're putting in two multiple family, multiple family buildings. That's not allowed a land use in that zoning district. So this would be a, so they're, but they're bringing a residential PUD. One of the things that went back and forth in the reviews is we noticed that their corner of their building was on a steep slope. And we said, that steep slope, you can't put it on that steep slope unless you give us soil testing that things aren't going to crumble into the creek. They, because of that, then they went in and did more soil borings and looked at what the creek is, the creek bank. Now, it was just approved on Monday, last Monday night by the planning commission to go to their city council. They're establishing a whole prairie to renaturalize that bank. Because when they did the borings, it was full of fill and silt because basically people had dumped there for years when it was a mill. And so they're renaturalizing the prairie. But if the planning commission, if we hadn't, if we hadn't said, hey, we don't think you should do that, and the planning commission was like, no, then we wouldn't, they wouldn't have got there. So if you are looking at something and you feel like, I don't think this preserves natural features. I think if you did this, that preserves natural features. At this, at that preliminary phase, that is a good thing for you to share. This is one of the few instances where you have a lot of free rein to ask for what you want. Because they're asking you for an exception. It should be, you should try and keep it commiserate with what the deviations they're asking for. So if they're asking for the moon, you can ask for the moon. If they're asking for a tiny little tweak, you should ask for a tiny little tweak. Sorry.
You're fine, you know, this is the point. That answer, keep going.
Can I ask a question? Would that discussion take place during the presentation of the preliminary?
Yeah.
Okay. So as they're going through the preliminary plan, we can be asking questions and talking about features potentially on the property and that's all within, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mateo, I'm sorry, one last thing. Would the, would the reduction, if there's the conventional plan that's based on current zoning, right, maximum number of lots based on zoning, if they go less than that, could that be considered a special feature or a, something they might want to try to help convince or help sell it?
I mean, I would think so. I mean, they can, I mean, yes, that, that could be part of their offering to say, you know, we could put this many units on here, we're proposing this many.
Okay.
So, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One question. On the preliminary site, it's a public hearing, then PC approves, approves with conditions, and then going over to the final, PC approves or approves with condition. I mean, this isn't a situation where we can say, hey, we'll approve it, but we want this, this and this. They do this, this and this, and now we pay, okay, we're going to approve it, but with these more conditions.
Yeah, I mean, I would think the appro, I mean, you're probably looking to put most of your cards on the table at preliminary. I would say that if there's something that comes up in the final that warrants, that there's some basis for warranting additional information on...
There's something credible.
Or they came to final with something potentially different, which would be the best move on their part, but yeah, it's, there's still some wiggle room at final.
Okay.
There's still some wiggle room at final, but, but there's got to be a reason for it, there's got to be a, you know.
Sure.
It's actually, if you want to, if you flip to the next one, it provides a little bit more context and some important points about, about the processes. So one of the, one of the very important elements of the planning commission having the approval power for both preliminary and final, and that's, again, you know, at some point in time, if, if there's a denial, that's where the project starts and they would have to come up with something new and reapply. But those approvals require four affirmative votes. So, you know, if you have four people here, all four, if you have six people here, four or six. Whatever, whatever that swing is, it is four affirmative votes at both approvals. And that's an important one to consider. You know, and at the point, at the point in time in which you get to final, you know, as Megan had said, and as we've discussed, like, you've, you've basically created this unique zone and now exists and has its own set of rules. And those are rules in which the township will have to administer in perpetuity or at the time in which maybe, you know, up until an amendment, disproposal, things of that nature. And as Megan alluded to as well, it is not, it is not the easiest process and if I'm not mistaken, your ordinance prohibits ZBA variances in PUDs. So again, it's just, you know, it's just something to kind of consider as you're looking at things. Is there, is there something in this design that is going to generate a problem down the road that people are then not really going to have a decent or efficient avenue to rectify? Any questions, preliminary or final?
So there's like no ZBA. So if somebody wanted to build a deck that was two feet longer than it should, it's a nope, if you want to move out type thing?
Right. I mean, and these, PUDs are typically, I mean, PUDs are typically developed as a single site.
Yeah.
So when you get into setbacks, that's...
And I've dealt with PUDs where that has happened. Exactly what you're describing has happened and people are starting to put on decks and they're finding that they can't put on decks. And kind of what ends up at the end of the day is you've got five people who've come to the counter, we know it's a problem, what we'd say is, hey, like, let's do a PUD amendment and, and figure out a way to do this. And, and so while, while you should be thinking about those, like, you're not setting up any problems, when you're approving a design, also know that there will be problems and there's, there are ways to fix them. There's minor amendments, there's major amendments, there's, there's, there's ways, ways to deal with it.
Is this something that the developer has to go back and request the amendment or can those five homeowners bring it up?
The five homeowners could bring it up. Sometimes in the PUD agreement, there might be, hey, for decks, they can go to the ZBA. Like, these are things that we can work out, find green details, they can like work, work out as you go through.
Okay. I would offer too that part of the pre, that's kind of what we try to do with the pre-app too, is think about the things they're not thinking about and bring up, you know, these easements are going to be a problem with, you know, potential encroachment of accessory structures or decks or things like that. So we do, or, or with slopes, you know? Anyone who wants to put a 10-foot deck off the back of this unit is going to hit this massive slope and that's going to be an issue. So we do try to ward that off at the pass. So as it relates to preliminary and final, the, the next page kind of offers up, and it is in the ordinance, the things that you're, the guide, basically it's a guide to you is like, what are the things we should be honing on in preliminary, what are the things we should be honing on in final? And so these are kind of laid out to give you an idea. And these follow the design standards, the conditions, all of the items that we've been discussing up to this point. And you can see, there's not, you know, preliminary, you're looking at most things that, you know, the recognizable and sustainable benefit that, that goes to final because that's really at the end of the day what's, what it is or is not going to be. And for final, you're kind of, it's not that you can't consider these things, but the things that it's not identifying our public service capacity and circumvention, those are things that would have been, should have been caught at preliminary and dealt with. So if, if the public services are so prominent final, that, that project's not going to go. And if the project is there to try to circumvent any kind of portion of the zoning ordinance, that's, again, you cut that off at preliminary. So, yeah, Mr. London.
So all this venting or vetting is done before, try to get most of it done before it comes to us, the PC for the pre?
Yes, I mean, we, we do our best. You know, it's like you see with, we try not to, like with those site plans too, we will try not to send you something with a laundry list of conditions. Like, we want a lot of stuff kind of nipped and tucked and hammered out. But there also might be some things that are going to be subjective that we do need to come to you with to say, how do you guys feel about these things?
Can I add one thing?
No. If I have to.
Or there might be something that we've requested over and over and the developer has not given. A lot of times what happens is a tree survey or conditions on trees. Because those are, it, it's an expensive endeavor to tag and, and survey trees on a heavily wooded lot that's over, you know, over 50 acres. So we may ask for that and the ordinance may require it. So if you see in a review where we say, we have asked for that and the applicant has not provided it, really what is happening is the applicant's decided they don't want, that they don't want or can't, and they know that you're the buck stops with you. Also, you can ask for additional studies at preliminary. So if you have a preliminary approval, a preliminary PUD in front of you and you say, gee, I want a natural, I, I'm not sure what all the natural features are on here because that information isn't on there. I want a natural features impact study, or the impact study, there's one that's listed in the zoning ordinance of what it was. You could easily say, the impact study at this point, we, I, I, we feel like we want to require that. And so you could postpone, have a vote to postpone to, and say that they need to bring that information back. Or there might be something else that's unique to the site. Let's say there's environmental contamination, but you don't know, you need more information. And I know this came up at the, the public was asking for the township to do a wildlife study. What it is, is you ask the applicant, or you can require the applicant to provide those studies, and then you have the ability to hire an expert to evaluate that study. So, and we've looked at them, especially for new extraction operations, usually there's a wildlife impact study, there's, there's some hydrology studies and things like that that are required. And then your engineer or some other expert that you hire should be, should evaluate those. We will also tell you when it is beyond our expertise.
So during the prelim review, within the packet, there would be information where your organization has gone to the developer and had, had correspondence back and forth? You've asked questions and they've responded, right?
Yeah.
So when we're reviewing the packets, digging into that information would be probably beneficial for us to see, are they responding, are they, are they taking your comments and then providing substantial benefit potentially, or showing where there's substantial benefit in the development and the way they're responding to those?
Right. And for our letters, anything that's outstanding would be listed on the last page. Typically have like three sections where these are your decisions, this is the information that's still needed. Usually this is the information that's needed before the planning commission makes any decision. And honestly, for anything, whether it's a site plan or this, if that's over five, if, if that's over five items, we're probably very uncomfortable. But we felt like we didn't have a choice. There's not necessarily a choice. And then, then there's what decisions you, you would make and there might be, and then if you're going to recommend approval, we would list some conditions. For the engineer's letter, you can look, and our letters will say it in the front, like, if we say, this is our third review of the preliminary PV, you know that we've seen it twice before, before you have. And your other reviewers will say that as well. And a lot of times in engineering reviews, they're much more streamlined than ours. They might just say, you know, they've met all the conditions, they, they've met everything, we feel comfortable with this going forward. And so then you know that they've had some back and forth and they're comfortable where it's at. And the engineers involved a lot longer, for a lot longer time than we are. Because Tim, Mr. London, works with them every day as construction is going on. So they're involved in a much longer, longer term. So they have, they, they have more opportunities for dotting i's and crossing t's.
Next, next is questions.
Okay. Come on up. You might know these.
Yeah. Mr. Turner, you have a question.
We mentioned earlier that the planning commission is the final stop. And the only thing that goes to the board is a contract. Okay. Nothing that I could find offhand, and I don't remember when we developed the ordinance, talking about a requirement for a contract. Or, and then the second question is, who develops that contract or who decides that the board even wants one? I know on some of the normal planning things, the contract becomes optional.
As far as it being required, it is under the authority section of the PUD that states that the township board has the authority to execute the development agreement or the master deed? If that answers the first part of your question. That they, yeah, that authority...
Yeah, if it's in here, that's fine. I just couldn't find it tonight as I looked.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure I was answering the question.
I think I look at it from a reverse, if, what would the board be approving if it didn't have a contract? What document, what would, what would they be approving?
If there wasn't a development agreement, there wouldn't be any involvement on the township board.
Correct.
So, but if there's substantial benefit, it's something like paving a road, putting in any infrastructure, donating a park, those are all things where it would be necessary for the township board to enter into a development agreement. And my experience has been 99% of the time, a PUD has a development agreement associated with it.
But now who, who, who has ownership for creating that?
Usually what happens is that the applicant brings it forward and they enter into a, you know, back and forth with the township attorney. There might be a model one that is given to them by the township attorney, but usually it's attorneys talking to attorneys.
Okay. So it's not the planning commission's responsibility to, to put that together?
No. You had something to add?
No.
Okay.
Well, I was going to add that I believe they would have to have, go before the township board and request a waiver of the developer's agreement. Otherwise, they have to do a developer's agreement.
And that's fine, but then I'm wondering on our side, who's responsible?
Ultimately, when, when we had this discussion with township attorney, she wants to start that process just before it goes to final. It really doesn't involve the pet, planning commission at all. But once you approve it, then they have to, before they could do anything more, we have to get approval within, I think, a period of time, the next board meeting or pretty quickly, they have to have the agreement in place before shovels or anything happens.
So that sort of falls on your area to work with the attorney to...
Yes.
To get that, Tim?
Yeah.
Who would determine if they have a waiver or a contract? There has to be a...
They have to request a waiver of the, by the township board, and if they approve it, then we don't have to do a developer's agreement.
Or they provide a contract.
Otherwise, they have to enter.
So if the planning commission approves a final site plan, goes to the board... So if the planning commission approves a final site plan, goes to the board for contract approval or a waiver from the app?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Not that I have. I don't have more at this point.
And for the whole thing, or are you wrapping up?
Fair.
I'll just, yeah, it looks like you're at the last page. You know, with changes in technology, having like a, an over, a flyover, say, of a new development, you know, is that something that they can, the developer could show us what the future development might look like from a flyover view, just using technology? Like, it just seems like it's hard for us to really picture what this development might look like, taking into consideration the trees that would get removed and the new homes. We see, we see a plan view, and we have a few elevations that are submitted in the prelim, but that's really it. It's kind of hard to picture without, you know, I can drive by down a road, and I can look at the acreage from a distance, but I can't enter that property, and really get an idea of all the natural features and, what do you think about that? Is that something that you've seen anywhere, or is being considered?
Many developers, as part of their package, will include a 3D rendering, especially if it's something like a multiple-family building, or, you know, one or two buildings.
Sure.
But for residential development, it, it's pretty hard. And then also, there's a computer program called SketchUp, which will, it'll create white boxes, and you can put, kind of, they say skins on them and things like that.
Right.
Not everybody has that access to that technology, A, and B, it can get a little pricey. Also, when you put a lot of things in there, sometimes developers might feel like, I'm committing to just that drawing, and they might be looking for some more flexibility going forward. So in terms of, I think that there is, you know, there's, there's always, what you can do is you, you can ask, we, for specific sites, we probably could ask for specific times for a group of the planning commission that's not a quorum to go and tour the property. I think we would want to make sure that their representative wasn't talking to everybody, so you don't have any expertise.
Okay, we asked my question. I, I'm just curious about technology, was used anywhere besides, say, a, a large building or...
No. And, and I haven't ever seen it required in an ordinance, except for, I think at one point in time, City of Birmingham was looking at it, and looking at 3D fly-throughs and requirements, but I don't know if they required that. And again, it, with technology, things are not as expensive as they used to be, but I haven't ever seen that required in a zoning ordinance.
The farmland preservation, does the future land map, the future land use map would call out a future use for that farmland? Would that be AG, or would, could that be a like trades, or how does that, what's the rule of thumb on that?
For a PUD, I think it depends. So for the, for the specific scenario that I talked about, where they're taking 20, 20 lots and putting them, that's called a transfer development rights. And typically, what you would do in your master plan is send up a, a sending zone and receiving zone. Like, we're going to send units from this area, and maybe it's everything that's future land use for ag. And they can send those to these areas that it's, you know, one-acre lots they can go down to. You can get density bonus, those can go up and hook up to water and sewer, they're in the water and sewer zone. That would be, but I've also, I've also had the experience in a rural township with a PUD where actually, it wasn't planned for agriculture, it was planned for, it was, it wasn't zoned for agriculture, it was planned for residential. It just happened to be at a really prominent spot, and somebody wanted to put in a, an event barn with a winery. So, and they were going to farm, they were going to put in their grapes too. So we used a PUD in that instance, in order to help that happen. Well, if there aren't any more questions, I want to thank you for your attention tonight. I hope this was helpful. And again, Mateo, myself, Tim London, Cheryl Lotan, we're all here to answer questions and help you. And so if you feel that you're going through these packets and getting overwhelmed, please send us emails, set up a time to come and talk to us. I know some of you, at least two of you do that on a regular basis, and that's what we're here for.
I found it super helpful. It was really, really helpful. It kind of explained a lot of, like, holes that I did not understand correctly, but now it's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number 12, communication and committee reports. Do we have anything on the economic development report? Okay. And ordinance review, committee?
For everybody's information, the sign ordinance went through the second reading last night at the board and was approved, so that should be published in the near future here. We are continuing to meet each month on the first Thursday of the month, no, second Thursday of the month.
Thank you. 13, planner and engineer reports. Anything else you want to report? And I don't see Mr. Sharp this evening. Unless anybody else has anything else, we can make a motion for adjournment.
Submitted a two-page document here on projects.
Okay. Who wants to read that?
You can on your own.
For each board, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure.
For each board meeting, Mr. Sharp puts together a comprehensive package of each project and all the details. And I'm going to look into that to see if we can get that to roll into our packet.
Okay.
So that information just actually flows down to us.
It's in there.
It's in there, John, that's...
So the last thing in your packet is Jim Sharp's report.
Then I stand to be corrected. Okay.
He heard you were coming to talk to him, so he did it. You want to look at it?
So do we need to go through project by project, or is this something?
No, it's just for your information.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we are done with number 13. Anybody has anything else? If not, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.